Be the adoption of the agenda. All right, Ms. Mathis makes that motion and Ms. Carlton seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Uh, approval of our last minutes of June the 25th, regular school board meeting. Ms. Agner makes that motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. That brings us up to presentations and reports. I think we have Mr. Ken, Ken Worthy that from FSBIT is going to give us an update on our hurricane Adelia insurance deductibles.
Thank you so much. Um, can you hear me okay or do I need to use my...
Just speak loud.
Okay, uh, yeah, that's me. I'm a former teacher. All right, so I, I appreciate you. Uh, I appreciate the invitation, um, superintendent to, to have us come in and talk about, um, uh, really, uh, organization of, of our, of our insurance and our coverage. Um, and we're going to give an update today on where we're at on all of our projects as well as, um, deductibles. So that's, I'm sure that's weighing, weighing on your mind as well. And I have the expert here to back me up, Dan, just in case I get it wrong. All right, so one of the things that... Um, I wanted to talk to you about a little, um, and, and you may or may not be familiar with this, but you hear all of these names floating around, especially when there might be some sort of debate in terms of what is the best practice to move forward. So first of all, uh, you know, they're kind of grouped here. So, um, you know, you, you are a member of FSBIT. So we are an insurer for you. Alliant over here to the side is our broker. So they, Alliant works for both you, the member, and us as, as FSBIT, as the insurer. We have a program that you have taken advantage of called Emergency Advantage. And the group that we, that, that fulfills all of those conditions under the Emergency Advantage program is called the Recovery Management Group. And so you know that they've been in, they've been boots on the ground here. You may have Jason, uh, Sculston, I think it was a bit. Um, Kelly showed me around today. Um, I think KC, uh, McReynolds has met with you off and on on your roofing projects. So those are those, those representatives. Now, um, after that, it gets a little fuzzy. Okay, so out here, McLaren's. McLaren's is an adjuster for the insuring markets. And when we talk about the insuring markets, insurance companies have insurance companies. And so if you look at the bottom over here, this represents the, the mud map or the Tetris chart or, you know, that's how your insurance is organized. So this represents the first 25 million of the 125 million that we have in insurance. Okay? Now you'll notice that this is all broken up. And it's important to recognize because the, the, why there is a holdup, because that'll, that'll come clear in just a minute. Of this 25 million, you can't find an insurance company out there that wants to write a hundred, a $25 million insurance policy. They would rather write a portion of that 25 million and spread that risk over all of their customers as opposed to experiencing the possibility of a $25 million loss on its own. So all of that is carved up. So if you look here, Berkshire is one of the insurance companies, one of the insurance markets. They have 10% of the exposure in that $25 million layer. Okay, and you go on. And, and Core only has 2.5% of that exposure of that 25 million. Goes over here, Westchester has 20% and you get the idea. So there are 13 different insurance companies that are responsible for paying your claim. Now, these 13 insurance companies have hired McLaren's to be their adjusters. So McLaren's has come in and looked and walked your roof. McLaren's has an engineer that works for them and those engineers are all employed by Halliwell. All right? You have your own engineering company, your district, um, engineer of record, and that's Matthew Parker, Parker Engineering. All right? So what, what has happened and what has made these roof, uh, decisions so complicated is McLaren's has hired Halliwell engineer. And just, I don't mean to be mean, but what do you suppose their answer is going to be to all of these roof situations?
Replacement.
I mean, the reality. So they, they've been fair in some cases, but, but they, you know, they're, they work for McLaren's who works for them, not for us.
Oh, wow.
Okay, so that's how this all pieces, you know, this pieces together. Parker works for you. He's your representative. He's out there advocating for your positions and replacing a lot of these roofs or making recommendations on what those, um, repairs should be. Well, there has been some disagreement between these two engineering firms. And so we have hired a tiebreaker, if you will. So Nova is an independent third party that we, uh, that we have hired to come in and try to settle some disagreements or maybe some, some differences of perspective. So I wanted to give you that context moving into this so you have a better idea. Because as we talk about these individual roofs, I'm going to be saying, you know, Halliwell decided this, Parker recommended this. In the end, Nova wants this. Or we have given each one of those engineering groups some next steps, especially when all three of them may have disagreed. So, so just to walk through this thing, you know, with the Emergency Advantage Program, they came out and they did damage assessments for you originally. They did some emergency stabilization, you know, they, they tarp some roofs for you. They cleaned up ceiling tiles. They, you know, um, came in and, and, and worked on, um, the ventilation system to keep the mold from growing. So all of those things happened in those first two bullets. Um, they've assessed all of the buildings and they have recommended scopes of work, um, in terms of things that need to be done. And then those had to be validated by, um, one of the engineering firms that we have, that selected. And in fact, um, you know, Parker has been instrumental in trying to, um, develop those scopes of work to ensure that you're getting what you need to and that that building is satisfactory to you, your taxpayers and the students that you, that you serve. Once that scope of work is developed, then it goes out to bid. So there, you know, uh, Recovery Management Group, Jason and, and KC send that out to bid. They get those bids back. They go through a cost validation with McLaren's because we, you know, you have a, an actual cash value versus a, um, replacement cost. Um, and there's a big difference there. You're insured on replacement values because, you know, you, actual cash value, you don't want that because that considers depreciation over the time, over time. And you need a building built back just like it was for the students that, that are, are going to be housed there. They, uh, RMG contracts with those individuals and then they provide the management and the oversight of that, um, particular project. So let's talk about where we're at. Stop me anytime if you have questions, you know, and I'll get Dan to answer them. All right, so, um, status of the roofing projects. So as we go through here, there were 63 roofs that were damaged. 10 of those roofs had automatic agreement with the engineers. Replacements, um, approved were, uh, 41. The estimated value of those replacements was a little over $10 million. And then, uh, going back and forth between the two engineering firms, um, there were 13 roofs out there that were originally thought to have been repaired, but discovered now they need to be replaced. We have 12 that are currently under review, five at the primary school, three at middle, one at Big Bend and three at, at pre-K. Okay? So let's talk about where we're at. This was a big milestone for us and we finally have, we don't have final written approval. We have consensus, uh, among the groups. And this is Taylor County Middle School, main building, which makes up most of the campus. That's all of that, um, campus that's there in red. So we've got an agreement on full replacement. And, and when I, when I talk about the, the tiebreaker, if you'll notice here, you've got, and I apologize that the font is, is so small, but I'm, I packed, um, you know, information in there. Halliwell, which is the market's insurer, said, eh, let's just coat the roof. Whereas PEG or Parker recommended full replacement. And so we had to have Nova come in and say, okay, pick a side here, tell us what to do. They sided with Parker and full replacement. So all of that in red, the roof is going to get, you know, completely replaced. Now, there are some disagreements on that campus, the, the, the pub building, the publishing building, the, you know, the gymnasium. There are some upper and, and lower sections in there that are still up for debate and we've got a plan for that going forward. But we've not reached an agreement on those at the middle school level. Um, this one is the next one, fortunately, that we believe we have agreement on. And again, Nova Engineering had to come in and be the tiebreaker. Because as you can see here, um, Halliwell by building went in there, well, we're going to replace some of it. We're going to elastomeric coat part of it. Um, and you can see the other two engineering firms were in full agreement that it needed full replaced. So as a result, we, I think, just day before yesterday, we got Nova's final report, um, supporting their decision for full replacement. And so we believe that buildings one, two, eight and nine on the, this campus here are going to be, um, be replaced. This, well, this is your, you've, you've seen that. So this is, this is where we're at. Those are the buildings that are, um, going to be, uh, replaced. Uh, Steen Hatchey, uh, another, uh, one that we reached agreement on. Halliwell said, replace part of it, um, leave the rest of it. Nova and Parker said, you know, it needs full replacement. Given that we had two out of the three say full replace, we'll be, um, replacing the roof on, um, I think that's building, building six. Okay? So those are the ones that are, that so far that we've managed to, to check off the list. Now, we've got several that we have not reached a consensus on yet. And that's, uh, you know, the superintendent's been on calls, I mean, Dan's been on calls. We've been haggling back and forth on that. The senior high pavilion, um, we don't have, um, complete agreement on yet. Big Bend, um, building B, um, which is what we were talking about today. We don't have full agreement on, um, as far as the opinions of the, of the three engineers. The primary school, old campus, um, it, it wouldn't fit on the screen, but there are a couple of other buildings that are down here. You didn't need to see them. You got the point. The, the point is, is that we don't have agreement on those. All right? Um, and then your pre-K campus, um, also buildings one and then building five, which has roof one and roof two, um, on it. Uh, we don't have agreement on that one as well. So what are we going to do about that, that we don't have, uh, agreements on?
Can I ask you a quick question before you move forward?
Sure.
In that last slide, some was yellow, some not? So is there a reason why some was highlighted and some not?
It, I, I sniffed it or I pasted and couldn't get the yellow off of there. The yellow was from another report that I needed to point something, but it's not germane to this presentation. Good observation.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have hired, again, tiebreaker, if you will, Nova Engineering. They're going to come in and actually, starting next week, they're going to be on your campuses. And they are going to do, um, leak test on the senior high buildings, one, two, three, 400, five, 600. Is that the right school?
Like that's, uh...
That looks like that's the primary or the elementary. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's the elementary. So strike the senior high, it's the elementary. Building B at Big Bend and then at the middle school, um, the publishing four and seven. So I think we've got those, those backwards on there. Um, and so we're going to need to get that cleared up. What are they going to do? So they're going to do forensic water infiltration testing. Basically, they're going to use two, two different things. There, um, one is they're merely going to hook up a pressure cleaner, if you will, and they're going to spray it in the areas where the leak might be. Because, you know, some, some of the roofs that are there are already, there's a, there's the second roof on there. So it's going to be very difficult to find where that leak is coming from because you're going to go through multiple layers. But they're going to attempt that. Um, and then they're also going to use some infrared, uh, thermography, um, to try to, um, determine where the leak is. So, you know, and it, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't take rocket science to walk into, I mean, the, the tech building, the A and B tech building, if you walk in there, you can just count the ceiling tiles and you can see where all the leaks are, you know. So to me, you know, why there's a debate on that building, I'm not seeing it, but I'm not an engineer. So, um, but, you know, that, that is one of the buildings that they'll be looking at to be able to, to do this. In addition to that, kind of coinciding with this is, um, Parker, because they, Parker Engineering Group was the only engineering firm that recommended replacement as compared to the other two. We're going to give him an opportunity to defend his position as well. So we will hire him. You, you have, you have a million dollars in professional fees that, that is accessible to you under your insurance policy. So we're going to tap into that million dollars to pay Parker to do an assessment on each one of the buildings that he feels should be replaced where the other two engineering firms don't believe it needs to be replaced. But that's only fair, right? That's so, um, so...
I thought Parker was an engineering firm.
Your engineer.
Right, okay.
Right.
So you're hiring Nova then, not Parker?
No, he's, we had to pay Parker for additional.
Because we, we, we need to be fair to you guys and your engineer of record is saying, hey, these still need to be replaced. Halliwell said, no, they don't. Nova backed up Halliwell's position. But still, we've got your engineer of record out here saying, eh, I really think they need to be replaced. So what we need to do is we need to hire him to do a full report.
I got you.
Justifying what his position is.
Okay.
Yeah. And so what, what the, what the, the, the whole purpose of that is, you know, was there damage identified? What is the cause of that damage? Was that, I don't know, was it workmanship? Was it the storm or were they paying for the storm? Because after all, the roofs were not leaking prior to the storm. And because there are so many, you imagine what the odds and statistics would be for all of them to leak independent of the storm? You know, so that's, that's, but anyway, um, sir.
Where it says primary, that's actually the elementary school.
Yeah, those, those must have, I, we've gotten those confused. Thank you for forming that up, I appreciate that. Okay, and so this, this actually, he, he hasn't signed a contract with him yet. He's given us a proposal and it'll take some time for him to get around and, and do all of those. Nova with their infiltration, um, actually should be here next week and, and, and start that, um, study. So we've already, I talked to, to Kelly this morning, they're, you know, they have, they have already identified the areas in which there are leaks that they want to point them to. So hopefully you'll see some water being splashed on roofs here by, at least by Tuesday. All right. Here are current projects, um, that are in place. The, you know, all of these first ones are, are roof replacements. And you can see the, the bulk of those, which are the senior high school, work is in progress. Projected start date was 7/10. And they anticipate that that will be finished, fingers crossed, prior to school. If it is not, that, that concept that we have agreed to actually can continue with an occupied campus. Okay, that's not preferable in, in any case, but, but it's one of those that, that it can continue. Um, was out there this morning. They've already started it. Um, they already started putting the metal over the standing seams. They have other purlings that are going across. So it's starting to, it's starting to, um, uh, they're just at the beginning. There were 25 people out there on the roof this morning. And from my understanding, there's an additional 25 that will record tomorrow. So you've got 50 people, um, you know, working on that roof. So hopefully, you know, uh, again, that, um, will, a substantial part of that will be done prior to school. However, you know, no guarantees, um, on that, but they're, they're giving it their best. All right, so, you know, we've got, um, the pavers, um, you know, that are going on out there. If you've been out there, you can see that, that there was a significant amount of damage. That was another interesting battle when it came to, um, the differences between the insuring markets adjusters. And, um, because that, that was bid out, um, it was a little, it was a little higher, um, in, in the resp, uh, or the bids. Those that responded was a little higher than this software program that the insuring markets or the adjusters use. And so when I punch all that square footage in there, taking into consideration where Perry is, and we know that could be a challenge, um, to, to get even individuals from Tallahassee to drive out here to do that repair work. So it was a little higher. That was a battle. But we ended up, you know, they, they saw things eventually our way. How they did is the insuring markets said, we're going to go get our own better. They couldn't find one. So despite their efforts in trying to call all the people that they thought, hey, would come right out to Perry and do that, all of them turned them down. And so they had to go with our original quotes that we put out. But that was an unnecessary battle, you know, that was unfortunate. All right. So again, we, we go through here, we give you the status on, on all of those, um, items that are out there. You know, like, uh, buildings C, D, G, um, at Big Bend, um, estimated to start three to four weeks following contract execution. Um, and that contract execution on those hopefully is expected next week as well, 7:15. Yes, ma'am.
So explain to me the bidding process where it is posted. We, in Taylor County, we've had mule closures. We've had a lot of things happen financially. So I'm wondering how accessible it is for local people and local companies to be able to bid on supplies or work or...
Sure. So if you have anybody that you would like to bid, all we need to do is to get them to Jason. Say, hey, Jason, will you put these out to bid? Include the bid package and send it to these guys.
Okay, so the contact information for Jason?
We'll get it to you.
Okay. I think we, we could post it somewhere, even on our district website, just to give...
Well, side secondary conversation, because we had that conversation in the school printing as well. A lot of your local contractors are extremely busy because of the storm also.
Right.
And so they, they, I know that they personally called, you know, numerous times to some of them. And they said, hey, we're just too busy, we can't do that. But you're right, that there's a local, you know, contractor, they should be given a shot to bid.
Right, or supplier even.
Yeah.
For supplies.
Okay, um, you know, you go as into the sports complex. We got approval on one of the, um, uh, yesterday, I'm not sure if it was the concession stand, um, and, and press box or if, uh, one of, one of the, one of them, we got approval on yesterday.
Press box.
Yeah, it was a press box, okay. So, um, you know, fingers crossed that that's in a, in a position where, you know, at least, uh, you know, football season can, can start and, and, you know, no, uh, no interruption there. Um, and then a lot of chain link fencing across your entire district. And, you know, that district-wide fencing is expected to start, um, on 7/18, which is also next week. Estimated 90 days to complete all fencing projects, um, throughout the district. Uh, just goes on, you know, by campus.
And that was awarded to a local vendor.
I'm sorry.
That was awarded to a local vendor.
Yeah.
So just to go...
All fencing was awarded to a local, locally? Good.
Fencing was all awarded to local vendors.
Probably the same guy that did around primary.
I, I don't have my hair in any of them, what just came?
The primary, the guy that did all the primary stuff?
Um, I, I don't know if he did all the primary stuff, but I mean, it was Randy Ascoff. I mean, he's the one who got the, got it, so.
Has something changed in regards to our local bidding process?
I did, was Steen Hatchey School on the fencing list?
Well, he told you that was on the roof.
I think it was funded by the school district. So this stuff, this study was by the school district.
Yeah.
Okay, Cam, I, I'm just asking because I always know there is a concern and by no means I, I want us, you know, to, when we do our bidding process, we just follow the bidding process. Because again, whether the vendor is local or not, we have a need for service. But as long as we follow in the bidding process, I don't think that excludes any local vendor, right? Okay.
Did you, did you find it on there or... What part of Steen Hatchey were you talking about, fencing? The fence, the chain link fence around that is falling. We have to, our principal has to go out there and stand it up and... And we've had some here too that's been popped up, but as long as it wasn't approved, it just got approved, Jeannie.
$92, district-wide fencing, I was just saying, but yeah, it's, it's right here.
Steen Hatchey Elementary School, see it?
Oh, one, two, three.
It's like the fourth or fifth one down.
When it was approved, that we, what we're trying to say is that it was just approved, like it was all a process. And now that that's been approved, we're moving forward with that work. We're talking about, like some of them were prompted because we were not, at that point, they had not been awarded that contract. They were just awarded that contract. So yes, we've had to take temporary measures. You know, you can see over at the middle school, some of it was prompted. But now that that's been awarded to that local contractor, he's, like you said, he's coming in on the 18th of the beginning of that work. So you'll see that.
Who is the contractor that it was awarded to?
Uh, you have, I think it was Randy Ascoff, I believe.
Who?
Randy Ascoff, I believe.
Randy Ascoff, okay.
Spring Hill, our spring, our Spring Hill fencing.
About $125, $30,000.
If he sent it, then may I put it on our board doc?
$200 and...
Okay, so the next thing, deductibles. Um, I, I didn't go and I can send you your deductibles per asset. We've got those reports there if you would, if you would like those. I combined them all by campus, um, here. And so you can tell, you know, uh, you know, Big, Big Bend Technical College, the value of those, um, buildings in question there. There are 10 projects, um, that are there already. The, the initial value incurred but not reported, um, is, is $2 million. Total project value not loaded by date is about $760,000. Your name storm deductible on those 10 projects is just shy of $800,000. The, the deductible obligation to date is $745,000. But those projects are not done yet, like the building B that we just talked about is, you know, what's going to happen with that? But it has anticipated that you max out your deduct, deductible. And so the district are responsible for $791,000 in deductibles at Big Bend. Does that make sense in how that formula works there? And you can apply that toward each one of those, um, campuses there. So what is anticipated, although all the work is not complete, this, this changes daily. An invoice comes in, it changes, a decision gets made on a replacement versus a, a repair. So all of those things change. This bottom line figure right here is what is anticipated. And I think that number probably, you've seen that number before, um, is around $6.1 million in deductibles that the district... All right, so any, any questions for me?
Can I get a copy of that last slide?
He gonna send it to Shannon.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I just have a question. And by the way, excellent presentation, Ken. It really brought a lot of information, um, clarity for me. Can you go back a couple of slides to where you were, like before you went to, not current, yeah, go back a little bit more? Where it was, whether it was your, okay, right there, can you go back a little more? Go back, no, forward, forward, I'm sorry. Right there. You see up top where you had the high school, but then when you went to that next section and you and Dan clarified that it was going to be the primary school? So right there, is that, is it the primary school or the high school you say you fit to come in right now? When you go to the next slide or two? Where was the slide where it had buildings 100, 200, 300?
Will you just touch that screen?
Oh, is that... Oh, look at that.
Nevermind, sorry.
So right there, you got the high school, but on those, the next two or three screens, you're talking about the elementary school. You, go forward. Go forward.
Are, are you asking?
Go forward. Right there, where you got the elementary school.
Yeah, these are, this was, I couldn't paste it that from what Nova sent us.
Okay.
But I need to go back and review that because that's not the senior high.
Right, but on that other slide where you had the senior high, that information was still correct, right?
Correct. The one that was in question that we didn't have consensus on was the pavilion.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to know. But thank you, good presentation.
So, so you can really see why it does take time to, uh, to get, to get a claim up and going and to get funded.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially when you go back and, you know, most people don't realize the number of parties that are involved, that you gotta, you know, ask for permission. number of parties that are involved, that you gotta, you know, ask for permission and have to hand it to the superintendent. Several of the calls and just, you know, advocating your position and on behalf of the students here about this.
And thank you for that slide because I think that helped, just that's...
Yes, that helped a lot.
That was the most... I bet, see, that sold the presentation.
Understanding the process, yeah. The other piece too is the bottom, the bottom.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
As he mentioned, that's just the first 25 million.
I have a question about that, to help me understand. So, so we take one of those projects and we take it across the bottom line down there. I see percentages. So on every project, all of those do a certain percentage?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I figured, but I just want to make, nobody seems to give you a heartburn about any of that? I mean, it's pretty much...
Not in the percentages that they have to pay. The decision is always, okay, if there's an alternative method to do that that is cheaper, that's what they aim for, unfortunately.
But everybody knows I gotta divvy up their percentage and nobody gives heartburn about that, okay?
No, no, once the decision is made, the decision is made now. But, but, you know, all 13 of these may have a difference in opinion as to the method, you know, in terms of should be replaced, should not be replaced, should it cover this, should it cover that.
But that's not their determination to be made.
The determination is made when it's presented to them.
Correct, correct. So what we, and that's why we had to have a tiebreaker. So when, when Halliwell, you know, has an opposing view of Parker, these guys aren't the ones to finally make that decision. We needed Nova to come in and, you know, hopefully in most of those, if you got two out, all of these have licensed engineers in the state of Florida capable of assessing that work. And so when you have two of the three, it should be cut and dry.
Right, right.
But this, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, but you're right now, you're, we're up to about $6 million deductible at this point, but it could be, should be, probably be more.
No, I think that's about the, we're hoping that that's the maximum.
They kind of considered those other...
We considered the replacements. We kind of already speculated that that's the route, because that's the route we want anyway. So those, those are in there. I'll confirm that, but I think that's really about the maximum.
Well, I mean, it's hard enough just if you're a homeowner and have insurance and deal with insurance companies, but when you get to this magnitude, it's, you know, it's kind of mind-blowing to a degree. And what you've presented there can be a web of deceit if you want to, because you've got one finger, one party saying, "It's not me, it's them," blah, 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 blah. And, but, you know, where our position is that we got this, all this damage, we just got to get her done, get it back where it needs to be. And of course, most folks who, you know, and not all the insurance companies, but I know people that are still dealing with the insurance company right now, nearly a year after the storm. And so I just can't, it's mind-boggling to think about the, what scope of work and so forth that we have to do in our own district here in our buildings and so forth. But appreciate this report, appreciate the work that you do, the oversight. And I know we still got more questions yet to, to answer, but projection-wise, a year from now, do we think we'll have all these projects done?
I would certainly hope so. I think that the, one of the things that I think we'll have to get together with is what, because there's, there are a lot of roofs yet to be done. And we had talked about, you know, the roof hugger, the roof over system is, is something that could be done while students are on campus. And some people say, "What you want to do?" And if that decision happens to be okay, well, I would rather not, rather wait until window periods, like, you know, Thanksgiving or Christmas to be able to do those kinds of things, then that might be a little bit longer. But those kinds of decisions have yet to be made.
But, kind of like that Charlotte County's, there was Ian, and that's two years, and they're still...
Yeah, but, boy, if we're at this two years, I think we're going to be there and gone. That was, that was a $150 million...
$150 million.
I think it actually right now at around 22, I think it was. For all counties that were involved. Lafayette had just a... Addison, you know, has, not the same majority, but they have got some...
And, and your experience with all this and what you've seen in the past in other counties and this kind of, you know, thing happening, do you believe that the first come to FEMA, the first serve? The sooner we can get for the deductible application to them? How, have you seen that, the process?
So your, my, my experience in dealing with FEMA is prior to this job. I've only gone to the job three months, so...
Oh, welcome.
Never mind then, never mind.
I used to be the superintendent for Okeechobee County Schools for the last 13 years.
I gotcha.
We had bits and pieces to go through. FEMA is a beast.
Oh, I know.
We're going to be dealing with them for...
It is a, it is a challenge.
10 years.
You know, I remember, because in 2004, 2005, there were the chain of storms that came through Ivan Francis, Jean Harley. And then that following year, there were actually a couple. Okeechobee was hit by several of those, and I know we at least went five years before we finally got the last FEMA in from FEMA. And our, our director of operations was pretty sharp and on top of things. The problem with FEMA is not only does it move slow, they change adjusters and rotate them out every couple of months, and you have to re-educate them all over again. And then they have an objection that was different than the objection from the first one, that you thought you had solved. It's just, you know, I hate it that there's, that it's so difficult. But FEMA is a... What I hear though, is if you could submit in little projects quickly...
Yes. The smaller, the faster.
The smaller, the faster, that's what I hear.
And that's the information I had given to Ashley when we went to the meeting, when they were at the chamber that day, the FEMA was at the chamber, and I went in and they gave me the cards and all that. I don't know if she passed that on to you?
But we were told to do that right, like, right away, like, honestly.
But this was, this was the head guy with the head card with the, with people, he said, "You send it to me, we'll walk it through," and I think she had that information. So I'm just curious.
But they came down, met with us, like, right after the hurricane. FEMA came down and met with us, and they told us the same thing. And that's what we did. Nevertheless, it persists. We have, we did, we did exactly what they asked. We've been going, doing this since the, like, how many weeks was that after the hurricane? We weren't back in session yet.
No, that was like a few days.
A few days after, when they came down, the head of FEMA came down and met, they came, the Florida Department of Emergency Management came down, they told us the same thing, and they told Madison the same thing. And that is exactly what we did, but it's exactly the process that Mr. Ken Wardis described. It did not matter.
Yeah, but this, with the guys that came to the chamber, he was the head guy from Orlando, he was coming in after these guys to oversee what had happened from them.
I met with him.
So that, that was something, and he, he did say, "Smaller, faster." So I encourage us to do that.
We did that, that's what I'm telling you.
Yeah.
We've done that, it has not moved. That's why, that's why we had to reach out to the Florida Department of Emergency Management and work with Kevin Guthrie to get some coverage, because it was not moving. Madison, they told Madison the same thing. Madison's projects finally began to move, maybe a little bit a few months ago. Ours still had not. So that's why we had to, I mean, we've had to do other things, otherwise these companies wouldn't still be working for us, because they're, they're expecting to get paid.
Right.
So had it not been for that office, we would be in a huge bind right now.
So they're basically like a loaning to keep us afloat till we get to that point.
That's what FDEM is loaning us, that. We haven't gotten it just yet, but we had an agreement...
We're working back and forth.
That they're going to loan us that until FEMA, until whenever FEMA gives us the money, then that will go back to FDEM.
But we've, we've done that. They told, they called it the fast lane. I mean, I'm telling you, three days after the hurricane, whatever it was, three days, they said, "We're going to fast-track this." She broke it down to less than a million was the, was the, what was given us. We did all of that. It, it continued to stay there, continued, things continued to get, I mean, and RMG, I think I'm saying that right, continued to go back and forth with them, and we saw no movement. So we have done everything that we've been told to do. It's very frustrating, it's been a very long and tedious process. And I have superintendent friends who went through Michael, who said they still haven't received things from FEMA. And you talked about one from 2004, but I mean, it's like watching the last strip down the road.
One of the other things though, along with this, is you really have to put a plug in here for Recovery Management Group under our Emergency Management. They've paid all those expenses on your behalf.
I know.
They're carrying that load. They're paying interest, or they have forfeited interest on the capital that they have to be able to move these projects along. So that's, they're a great partner, and, and I can't imagine going through a, a storm of this magnitude without having a party like that.
And that's my next question. These that are floating us, when FEMA does pay, we're still going to have an amount of their interest that FEMA will not approve.
We're paying, we're paying them with the, with the loan that FDEM is paying us.
Right. But FEMA's only going to give us back the project, they're not going to give us back the interest. So that's still going to be our expense to pay.
That's what he's saying, that wasn't the point he was making.
So let me phrase that a little bit differently. They charge an overhead and profit, and they're compensating for that interest in there by allowing you to...
But FEMA will pay 100% of that, or FEMA will not pay 100% of that?
FEMA's, FEMA's going to pay for your deductibles. Your insurance through physical pay for everything else.
Okay, okay. So it's not, it's not, that's not going to be another expense on top of an expense that we've got to worry about, is what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay.
Ken, would you mention a little bit or talk about the, well, basically the loan for our deductible, that's, we're just fortunate to get that, that's not always available?
Yeah. So what, and we, we spent, last week, we had a, had a conference in Howie in the Hills, and it was basically on catastrophic management, what do we do? The, a couple of different things. I look at, again, my, my history with the, has, has been with the, with the school district, and I, and I look at that, and the deductibles are a school district's responsibility. And that has gone up. So since Hurricane Ian came in and hit Charlotte and DeSoto, your deductibles were only 3% of the value of that asset. Well, now they've gone to five, because you can't afford to pay for a 3% deductible. That's gone up significantly. And people seriously underestimate what the value of 5% of their building is. And so when you, when you talk, well, you, you saw those on the last, on the last slide there about what, let me give you, here's an example that I used last week. Okeechobee is building a, a new high school, like you guys, got special facilities money. In order to build a new high school, the value of that high school is $100 million. And it's all under one roof, meaning that is one deductible. So Okeechobee will not see a dime of insurance money until they spend $5 million.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So the, the question is, is like you guys were trying, where in the world do you come up that money? In your capital budget, do you have $5 million laying around? You know, you got $5 million laying around, and then you just write the check for the deductible? Well, if you're like most districts, the answer is absolutely not. You, you don't have. Now, in this situation, again, through some of the, you know, Jason and Recovery Management and working with FEMA, you guys starting legislatively, you try to work on your legislators and jumping on that, you know, that was great to be able to, to assist you. But ultimately in the end, you know, I know, I know, like Bay County, after Michael, got a legislative appropriation because they were hurt here so bad, you know. The problem is, is I don't think you can count on those things. We haven't been able to count on the legislature. You know, we, you know, we...
I think it's going to get beat up.
Department of Emergency Management, my understanding is, those were leftover federal dollars if they were looking for a use.
But they got lucky on...
Exactly. So would the next storm that come through, you be able to support, any district be able to use that as a source of revenue to pay those deductibles?
I think, we've been able to see that from Michael, just saying, you don't know, so...
What we have been telling districts is make a plan.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, even if that is, you know, I can set aside $500,000 for the next several years in our capital budget to try to, it's, it's just a matter of when, you know, you're ready to hit again, unfortunately. Hopefully it'll be a while, but being able to set aside some of those dollars that are protected, you know, again, and it, it's more beneficial if you can do it out of capital. But you're going to have some challenges going forward as well, because you have some projects out there that didn't need deductible or which are all going to be at your expense. So I imagine your capital budget is pretty spent here for the next couple of years anyway. But that, as a long-term plan, might be something to think about.
Explain to you, I don't know, so I think a lot of people think that FEMA is there to cover your deductible, but that's not true. That is not what FEMA does.
Yeah. So FEMA will, will assist you in the recoveries of your deductibles in things that insurances won't take care of, you know, typically. But it's a fight, it's a battle, and it's a long length of time before you ever see a dollar.
And that was the first thing they told us. We, the purpose of FEMA as an organization is not...
It's a reimbursement.
It's a, it's a reimbursement, but it's not to help, you know, they're not, that's not what they're really there for. People seem to think that's what they're, they're not.
You have to...
You're correct, you have to spend that money.
Yes. You have to submit an actual bill invoice to them, show them where you've paid it.
Yeah, it may or may not get paid.
And that's where our emergency...
It may or may not get paid.
Pictures and video and...
And it may get paid 20 years later.
On this form, open it on that form, we got a new incentive, so we're going to put it on this one now.
Thank you. Okay. No, thank you.
Thank you. Very, very informative.
Thank you. All right. Lot, lot of information there, lot of information, thank you for that.
Angela, we'll send that to you.
All right. This brings us down, actually, as we adopted the agenda, the consent items were approved by the adoption. But Ms. Dunell, you have a question on 8.01, number 16?
Yes.
Is it just a question that you might get an answer for?
I hope I can get an answer for the superintendent, I hope she can get...
I hope I can answer. We are, so we have agreed to employ, you know, if we agree to do those aids, it will save us about $100,000, I think is the last figure. And so if we take on those employees and build them, it saves, it saves us, that's why we chose to go with that one.
Okay. Well, my question was, when I read it...
Yes, ma'am.
And you know how it outlines what is their responsibilities, what is our responsibilities? And I know from the presentation, they stated what they were going to provide, so I just wanted to make sure it was still what had been discussed, because I know there was still some concerns with it. And I just wanted to, and Danny, I don't know if you noticed, but it's like, how many am I here? It's like 28 or more.
Yep.
It's 33. So that's a lot of reading for one week. So I was still trying to get through them, but I did see that, and I just wanted to make sure if I understood what I was reading.
They'll provide the RMI like they have before, to...
Okay.
...all programs, and that's what you have to have for those care plans. And also, they're calling it, I think, like an H, anyway, like, it's like a health aid that would be over...
Yes.
That would help be over those actual aids that we're employing, just to make sure that they are doing everything correctly and helping with the training and all that. And then the rest would be our employees.
So is that a typo where in theirs it says, like you say, HSA, a health support aid, but then in ours it says, "We'll provide six SHA"? I'm assuming that might be a typo.
Health aid versus health support.
Okay, all right, okay, all right. So it's not a typo, it's just a different...
I think they're calling it...
Okay, all right, that's...
Okay, you're good.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Mathis has a question on, uh, item four point oh one, number four, right?
And it is for Mr. Anderson. Dan, the, the maintenance facility requesting purchase of St. Hattie School refrigeration replacement equipment. So the freezer that's coming in, do you have any idea when we will receive it? Two weeks?
Four to six.
Four to six weeks. So on August the seventh, we have a huge food delivery coming in, frozen food. Do we have any idea of what to do with that food when we don't have a freezer to put it in?
There's other freezers in the store.
We're going to need to, we're going to have to have them because that, I talked to, um, Ms. Rhodes, the, the new lunchroom manager. She took Ms. Delaima Call's place and she's very nervous. She was afraid that was going to happen. You'll, you'll get it. You'll, okay. You want me to let her know you'll, you'll take care of it? Okay.
Let's come in.
Somebody done it. August the seventh. You want me to have her email you?
Logistics.
Okay. You get the logistics straight on it. All right. I'll let her know.
Um, but did, is the superintendent aware of what the concern is?
Well, I am now.
Can, can y'all make sure she's aware so she can oversee that?
I know Dan will.
I'm saying make sure Dan is able to. That's what I'm saying. If she don't know, how is he knowing?
I'm assuming we have room in this freezer here if we had to. Short here. Thank y'all for waiting.
All right. So are you good now?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. So the consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. This brings us down to our action items. And the first action item is nine point oh four, an appointment of the twenty-four, twenty-five FSBA Advocacy Committee Representative and Alternative.
Oh, Bonnie Sue's been doing that, correct, Bonnie? You was, um, you know, if you'd like to do it, I'd like to see you do it.
It's up to y'all. I'm, I'm fine with it. I enjoy it. I really do. Um, I've made some good connections and.
If somebody else wants to do it, that's, I mean, you.
I would, I would.
I think you do a great job, Bonnie Sue.
Yeah, I would make them, you know, commotion.
I'd second that.
You make a motion for Bonnie Sue and an alternative, alternative?
Jenny was the alternative.
Jenny, can you still serve as alternative?
Sure.
Okay. Cause I already have accepted some other responsibilities with, um, the executive director as far as FSBA and our small district consortium. And if I'm serving as alternative for the local, I'm stretched. So I just, okay.
I would, I'd make the motion.
And I'll second the motion.
So the motion for Bonnie Sue as the representative and Ms. Mathis as the alternate.
Right.
Okay. We have a motion. Uh, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. Ms. Donnell seconds. All in favor for that, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carry. Item, item twelve point oh five, appointment administrative personnel, appointment of Lisa Linton as Administrative Assistant to Finance Director, effective July the fifteenth, twenty-four.
Make a motion.
All right. Ms. Carlton makes the motion.
Second.
Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Item twelve point oh seven, uh, reappointment of non-instructional personnel for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Motion.
All right. Ms. Mathis makes the motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Item twelve point oh eight, reappointment of annual contract personnel. These, these are teachers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Motion.
All right. Motion by Ms. Mathis, second by Ms. Carlton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carry. Item twelve point oh nine, reappointment of professional continuing contract personnel, uh, teachers for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
I'll make a motion.
All right. Ms. Carlton makes that motion.
Second.
And second by Ms. Agner. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
I do got a question. Superintendent, are we aware of all oh seven, oh eight, oh nine? Are they up to date on their annual requirements, if there were any annual requirements? Okay.
Okay. Item twelve point two six, approval of salary schedule. Ms. Tillman, Director of BBTC, is requesting to change grant facilitator position number zero one three one five three one zero one from being grant funded to an administrative position to be paid under the administrative salary schedule A two one oh and start on level one. And this is being done to release grant money to purchase equipment, materials, software, and so forth.
Motion.
All right. Motion by Ms. Mathis, seconded by Ms. Carlton. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. With it being administrative, um, superintendent, is it going to be eight hours, twelve months? Is it like? So it will be a twelve month position? Yeah, but it was grant funded, but now it's administrative. So that mean that's.
Her hours are not going to change.
No, I know that. I'm just wondering, like, is she now, is she going to be paid from workforce or general fund like what? So that's why I'm asking about the contract. Yeah, but is it coming from workforce? Okay. Cause all y'all don't come from workforce. Some does come out of general fund, right? Okay. So that's what my question is.
Okay. All in favor, we've, we done voted. You're right.
Yeah, you could. But you skipped eleven. You skipped twelve point eleven to drop. That's consent. Okay.
Okay. All right. Well, this brings us down to the items of interest by superintendent and board. Uh, Ms. Superintendent, you have anything?
Well, thank, uh, Mr. Ken, word to you. Thank you so much for coming. Um, really made a difference, I think, to be able to see this. Even though I've sat in on a lot of those calls, I think even Shannon and I are like, sometimes, I mean, who is, what's that? So that really, just that right there helped a lot to finally drive it home for me. Um, even the part on the bottom with the percentage, you know, and we always knew it was a trust, but even to see how that was broken out by the percentages also helps me understand the process a little bit more. Just want to appreciate, uh, tell you, I appreciate everybody advocating for us. Um, I appreciate, um, letting me go hard sometimes in those meetings for us, um, when we don't have agreement, you know, and, and hearing, letting our voice being heard and, and making sure that we're advocating for the right things for our district. Um, and I also think that our board needs to, to discuss at a later time, um, some of the things that you mentioned as far as setting up a portion of, of that budget from capital outlay. Um, go ahead and start setting that aside for things like this because it's not a matter of, um, yeah, it's a matter of when. I mean, because of just where we live geographically, but it's probably going to happen again. So we need to, to be prepared and we need to think ahead. So I appreciate that advice.
So I have a question with you saying that. With us in budget, and I know soon information would be coming to us and we can't make a net suggestion, but given the dynamics of, you know, with the closure of the mills, is that something we're anticipating to be able to discuss this year or next year?
I just heard that. I just heard the advice.
I mean, cause we do know our capital outlay funds are going to be limited because of that. So that's what I'm saying.
I think that it's something to think about. We may not be able to set aside five hundred thousand, but what's to keep us from setting aside a.
That's what I'm saying. Are we able to discuss that right now in this budget? Whatever you're going to.
Yeah, we have, the budget's not set yet.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Um, and also just wanted to say, uh, the school administrators and some of the district administrators, and I just got back from our annual conference with Pace and Destin and, um, learned a lot of new things, um, helped us prepare for some things that are coming our way. And just want to say thank you to them for going and being attentive. We, um, I worked them a little bit harder than the other districts. Uh, we set up an additional, uh, session that Monday morning with our K-12 lift and whenever our school data, um, that's come in. And, um, you know, school grades haven't come out yet. They're going to wait till the State Board of Education meeting on July the twenty-fourth. And that's when they'll actually set those cut points. And that's when, even though students' individual scores are in, and even though you can see the state, um, we can compare our district's course with our state's course, the actual cut points haven't been set yet. So you won't see that till after, after the State Board of Education meeting on July twenty-fourth. So just wanted to bring you up to state where we are then. Once all that comes in, we will probably, we'll bring a, um, workshop back like we've done in the past where I've had the schools present to the board, you know, um.
I was about to say, it's so coming up here.
That's our best control.
I'm sorry. I just.
It's going on everywhere. So don't, don't think we're not on topic. My other work building, I've been killing insects all week. And I'm like, what is going on? I think it's all the rain, honestly.
Anyway, um, once, once all that comes in, we will, I'll have my administrators come back and present to you, to the board again, like we've done in the past, our school grades and where we're at and what we saw versus, um, like districts and how we compared with the state averages and so forth. Um, the other thing I want to do is our next board meeting, I want to, um, you know, we've got the, we had a request from St. Hattie to add sixth grade. And so Lacey has helped run those numbers and those expenses. And so we will present that in a workshop at our next meeting. And if y'all have any questions before then or anything you want us to add, let us know and we'll try to put that in there.
I have our next meeting in, on my calendar for the twenty-third at five fifteen. Is that correct still?
Okay.
And I have reached out to those that have asked, um, the, the, uh, Ms. Bowen, who came last time and spoke and asked for us to consider that. I have emailed her and let her know that that's when it will be and the time. So they're aware. And I think they've already published that on their websites as well.
Okay. That it?
That's it.
All right. Well, thank you. Ms. Donnell.
Um, again, Ken, just thank you for that presentation. Like, um, everyone has pointed out, it really helped, you know, especially us as board and then that we're not in the day to day. This has been, you know, a concern for us and just knowing where we at and making sure we're staying on top of that. And, you know, just knowing, you know, the expense of where we at in regards to, you know, post-storm. So thank you for that information. Thank you for, you know, giving us, you know, all the players and, you know, where they at and where we at with what we doing. It was very helpful. I really appreciate it. I was just impressed the whole, um, presentation. And as well as we get to look at it a little more when that information is forward. So thank you for that. Um, as Alicia pointed out, I'm, I'm glad to hear that you guys had y'all annual, whatever that was and just the work that went into that. So, um, excited to hear that information and it's coming back from these different conferences. I am going to ask, and I don't know if it's, you're able to, you just said if it's anything else. Um, I know this past year, we made some changes to discipline and addition of the math coach. And then I know you did a survey with some teachers or whatever. Um, is there any way you can add in of that information to your report or if it might already be in what you're bringing to us, um, when you're looking at school grades? Cause I know you said that, um, there has been some, some improvement with discipline, but being that, um.
Yes, ma'am. That'll be part of the presentation.
Right. Okay. So, um, I'm excited for that. And I think I seen, and I don't know if I'm late on this, but I thought I seen something our ROTC recently did or something. And I don't know if we had the opportunity to acknowledge it. So I don't know if they had a competition or something. And maybe I just missed it before school got out or something. But I've just been excited to see, um, again, what's going on with our different programs, even though we're in summer, but just preparation. I've seen, you know, soccer working. I've seen, um, the, you know, both football programs at the middle school and the high school. I know our, our high school players are at camp this week and just sent some of the pictures and just to continue community support with that. So, um, and I know summer school got out and everything. And, um, I'm, it looks like everything went well with that. So just, um, hope everyone is enjoying their summer. And, you know, that, you know, we get what we need done during the summertime. So we'll be able to hit the ground running for the fall. So.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Agner.
I had one more question about emergency management, whether they're doing the float for us. Is there a deadline with them?
I'm sorry, what?
Is there a deadline with them? How long will they float it?
They don't, they don't, it's not like they're floating it. Like they're, they're, we're working on that agreement for them to give us that money. And then once, basically once FEMA pays us that, they'll take that draw out of there. So.
So there's no, like, I will only do this for five years or ten years or?
Not that I know of. It's just whenever, whenever FEMA reimburses us. It's like, it almost, I don't want to say it's a pastor, but it's almost like a, here's this and then they take it from FEMA.
That agreement was on here too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does it have a date that I didn't see a deadline on? Uh, I don't think they had a time cap on it is what I'm saying. You know, like the loans due now kind of thing. Okay. And I wanted to check and see if we had anything about our teachers recruitment with the.
I'm sorry.
The teacher recruitment that we, when we, you know, we had the workshop.
Oh, yeah. The foreign exchange.
Teachers. Were, were we anywhere with them? Or how's that going?
Um, so Kiki has been meeting with, um, several principals and they have been interviewing those applicants because there were some in that, that were available. And so that, they're in the process of that. And so, um, whether or not they'll be able to come, still to be determined, but they have interviewed them. That's where they're at right now.
Okay. So it's still a possibility.
Possibility.
It is a possibility. It's a possibility for this year.
Okay.
We'll have some of them.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
You don't have any or anything?
No, off the top of my head, I do not.
Okay. And on feeding the team, are we still on for July the twenty-fifth?
Yes, but we need to talk about what we're going to do because the other that we recommended wasn't. So we'll have to discuss about.
It's not cost efficient.
What else we want to do. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Something else.
Okay. All right. And, uh, that's basically all of the questions I had. And just appreciate everybody's hard work.
Hey, thank you. Ms. Mathis.
Um, I want to thank, which they left Sabrina and Jill and, um, Shelby, Jody, all the contracts that are up that were in our packet. There's just a huge amount of contract renewals and a lot of hard work has went in to getting those ready and getting them up. And I want to thank y'all for that. And congratulate Lacey on her new assistant. And on her new assistant on being her new assistant. Also, and, um, also, I just want to reiterate, when any, the thing about using local companies and local suppliers, it's so important. It's so always important, no matter when we do or what we do, but especially at a time like this. And I know that everyone is busy, but I feel like that I, I hate to see any opportunity missed for a local company to, to be an, an aluminum supplier or a local company to, it would, there's going to be a huge amount of aluminum. I can just imagine what kind of boost that could be to a company, you know, for the roofing materials and stuff like that. So just, um, want to make sure that that stays in the forefront, you know, for, for, for our residents. And, um, also, um, there was something, I think we covered the bulldog feast already in the next meeting. And Mr. Anderson, I will email you and Laverne and Alicia, all of us at one time about the freezer to try to coordinate that because she's going to panic when she hears this. She's already panicking. So I know she's going to do a double panic when she finds out. And, um, I'll, another thing, it's really, really hot. So I know your maintenance guys are out there working or transportation guys are over there working in that garage and our students are welding. And so there's just, everyone be safe in this heat and do everything that you can to keep it cool, you know, for them. That's it for me. Okay.
Okay. Ms. Carlton?
Yeah. Um, not to dwell on a lot of that, be repetitive, but, uh, school will be starting back before, before long. Of course, you know, the stores and all are gearing up to back to school supplies. And I see a lot of, of, of really, uh, the community involvement too, and not only having some, uh, backpacks and supply giveaways, but, uh, um, collecting and.
And we have a lot of them. They're doing the same thing.
I know. They're, they love backpacks and supplies, but, um, so, and I do appreciate that, that, uh, our computer, our community helps us out a lot on that. And, um, as we mentioned before, uh, Shannon and I did go to, um, to the FSB, uh, risk managers meeting and, um, looked, um, we, we, we listened and we participated and kind of had some homework to take away. And I can personally tell you, uh, Shanna is going to be doing some different things. There's a lot of expectations, I know, in coming up with some of these plans and, um, being prepared for the, for the future. So, um, but very, it was very good. Thanks again, Ken. Appreciate that. Very good presentation.
Do you think we need to workshop, um, going forward, the, talking about the funds being set aside for this kind of stuff? Do you think that's something we need to do? Do you think that's something we need to do?
I personally think it would be good if we could do that, but, uh, there's probably some more things that are gonna be little action items we might need to do that we're talking a little bit about, and I may be wrong, Ken, have to correct me on this. You know, uh, the county can, you can get some M O U's with the county to do certain things and help you out with, and, um, I mean, it's just probably several other things that we might need to consider.
Okay. Hopefully, we won't need it, but we need to be prepared more, I think, than we were this time, maybe, you know?
Well, I think we're prepared now, but more than we were then.
I think we were really prepared, even now, I mean, if you look at what, if you look at our out-of-pocket and the way we have had, like, the backup plan for our deductible, you know, for FEMA and the company that stepped in, covered the cost until FEMA can, can, I mean, we really have been-
That wasn't a guarantee, I'm talking about us within the district, not depending on people from the outside, us as a district, what we can do and get in place, and whether it be a person in charge, of course, Christie's not here, but, you know, whoever our emergency person is, and just, just those kind of things.
That's part of this plan.
And a lot of the stuff that we talked about, like, we're in, we're in it right now. Like, a lot of the things that we're talking about are the things, like, we had to rush and do it, you know what I mean? Like, getting synergy and, and getting like E A and all of those things, like, we're doing all that right now. So we just need to continue to have that in our brains and like, and money, wherever we have money, which we don't have a lot to put aside, but that needs to be something that we-
And maybe take the things that you're having to do right now and put that in some sort of policy form so that we have it for the, you know, for the next, you know, we're well-prepared.
Right.
Now, Ken, I don't like your language when you said it's just a matter of when again. I'm like, oh, that's scary, I hope that doesn't happen.
One, one other thing, Ken, and I, I, I can't remember exactly, but the contract that FSBIT procured with emergency management, when was it put in place?
Um, it was prior to the end, so, three years ago.
And then the, then the districts had to elect to be a part of that, and I mean, uh, we, if I'm not mistaken, we only did it last, I mean, it was several, just several months before the storm.
Prior to the-
Yes, so I'm saying, I, I keep saying, thank you, Chris Olson, for keeping, you know, pushing forward on that.
So we, that's something we need to stay on top of yearly to year.
And continue to stay.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know what we would do.
Like I said, Shannon's kinda got a list, uh, or all the risk managers kinda had a list of things that they needed to do and trying to work up a plan for the, you know, for the future.
That's great.
I mean, I, but I, I, I guess I should have said concern is, but I don't think it would be, um, I mean, I don't think it'd be a, I think it really would be a need for us to workshop it, to know what they're like and what that was gonna entail, and what y'all all are doing, and, you know, what forward direction that it's gonna put us in.
I'm, I'm just-
I mean, I'm not saying it has to be at the next meeting, but, yeah.
But I'm just thinking that we-
Well, here's what I'm thinking, if we can get the things in place that we need, just like we're doing right now, and have that as a procedure to say, you ain't gotta have a special board meeting, you ain't gotta call for emergency this or emergency that, this is the protocol to follow.
With synergy, we ended up having to do like an emergency contract, and we were talking about, like, when we're done with them for this storm, how do we continue, that's a contract that's like in the background kind of, that if you need it-
The contract doesn't-
That's my, that's my goal, is to, is to get-
It doesn't cost anything until you-
Until you use it.
Do you have the name storm.
So let's get all that in place so that when that-
So that it becomes policy, it becomes something that we are always prepared.
You don't have to wait on us to give you permission to do anything, you just have it there and you just go with it, because we're not gonna, you know-
Stop what you're doing.
That's it, okay, thank you. All right, uh, well, as we close down this afternoon, appreciate the, there, once again, the reports and the input and all that's been, uh, discussed here this afternoon. Today is July the twelfth, so we're, we're looking at probably two and a half weeks or so, three weeks at the most for school will be back, I mean, teachers will be back. So, I mean, it's just like we said here just yesterday and said, have a good summer.
Yeah, there is, go out.
But anyway, appreciate all the hard work and the work that's still going on. A lot of work, uh, yet to, to, to see happen through what we, we experienced from the storm. So just do our very best and everybody work together and we'll get through it, so. But again, uh, we appreciate, uh, everyone being here today. Do I have a motion to second to adjourn this meeting? Ms. Carlton makes that motion, Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? This meeting is adjourned.
You go ahead and do that, Camille.